Good morning, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today is April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smith. We have anyone from the public to be recognized?
No.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for the bills.
I hope we pay the bills or probably we're going to approve.
I'll second that.
Been properly moved and seconded to pay the bills since they have been presented and reviewed. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Brings us to our assessor's office with tax correction.
A total of six dollars.
Six dollars and fifty cents this morning. It was reported, something that was reported incorrectly when all the old people called.
I make a motion that we approve this tax correction.
One second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction list as it has been presented to the assessor. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Brings us to our nine thirty-one appointment with Patty Ryan and Brian Venshaw. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Your Community Foundation, North Central West Virginia, request for funding and an update.
Yes.
It's okay, can I ask these out to you? This is a proposal that we are presenting to the Preston County Commissioners. Get that to you, and then I'd also like to share with you two other handouts. One is about the grants that YCF made to the community in two thousand twenty-one, and the other one is about our emergency impact fund. All of the grants that have been made from YCF benefit Preston County. So just want to, in case you aren't too familiar with YCF, I wanted to make sure you had this current information. YCF, it stands for Your Community Foundation of North Central West Virginia, which is a really long name, so we call ourselves YCF. But we do serve five county region, including Preston, Marion, Mon, Galia, Harrison, and Taylor Counties. Our funds are endowed funds, meaning that we invest the principal of the funds and only spend the earnings of those funds. And the earnings that we make are in the form of grants or scholarships. And those funds come to us from the public, so they could be private, gifts from private donors, from individuals, from businesses. And that donor creates an agreement with YCF on how they'd like to utilize those funds. And it's YCF's job then to manage and steward those funds on behalf of the donor. So that's just a little bit about YCF, I'm happy to talk more about it if you're interested or have any questions. What I'm bringing to you today to consider is that we've been presented by an anonymous donor with a million-dollar challenge. This is the first time YCF has ever received something like this, and it's really incredibly generous and a wonderful opportunity for us to raise unrestricted grant dollars to benefit our five-county region. And so why that's so important is most of those we manage right now, a hundred and fifty approximately, different funds, and that makes up twenty million dollars, and that's a lot of money, but most of it is restricted for certain purposes, for grant funding or for scholarships. This, what we're calling the one-million-dollar match campaign, is for unrestricted funding to benefit our communities. So the idea is that whatever, every dollar that we can raise will be matched by the donor. We will invest those funds into our endowment pool, and then the earnings each year will provide grants to nonprofits in the community. Is how that will work. This proposal, you don't have to give me an answer today, I just wanted to present this to the commission as an opportunity because we can accept gifts from county commissions, from individuals, corporations. And so it is an opportunity to provide long-term, sustainable grant funds for your community. So the proposal will tell you a little bit more about the campaign challenge. Our goal is to meet the million dollars by the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. We are asking people to consider region-wide gifts, because we serve the whole region, but we certainly understand with a commission that you would want your money to stay in Preston County, so you may create the funds and designate it for nonprofits in Preston County. However, the matching funds will go to the larger pool that we're calling the Impact Fund, which benefits the entire region. But I want to make sure you know that those dollars do go to Preston County nonprofits, which is why I wanted to make sure you have those other handouts that demonstrates that we have provided a lot of grant funds to Preston County nonprofit agencies. And we're able to give to five-oh-one C threes, but also to just nonprofits in general, so they could be schools or hospitals, libraries, et cetera. So we do have a little bit broader range of giving. We use a software program that makes sure that all the five-oh-one C threes are in compliance with both the state and the federal government. So we really try to do our homework and make sure that we're supporting agencies that are in compliance. Am I missing any in your two thousand twenty-one grant recipients? I see Preston County three in there, am I missing, is there someone else that's tagged to Preston County there?
I think what we've noticed is a lot of the agencies actually overlap counties, so while they might not say Preston County, let me give them.
Here's another one, let her see.
Literacy, I was gonna say literacy.
Yeah, and like girl on the right is a Brian.
Only ten of them.
They don't all start with a P.
Sure, that's correct, right. Why, I was just trying to get a better snapshot.
Also for kids, also.
Shop with her.
Yeah.
One question, is this dollar-for-dollar match?
It is.
Dollar-for-dollar.
Also.
I don't even know.
Up to one million dollars.
One million dollars. And I think it is important, too, that part of the proposal, and there's more information again here for you to read about, but part of it is actually to create an addiction prevention initiative fund. We don't have anything like this at YCF, and as you know, I mean, we need to help with the addiction issue in this country, you know, not region. So that is a new initiative that is being started by YCF, where up to a hundred thousand dollars of that will be matched. The rest is for, the nine-hundred thousand is the Impact Fund, which is the general grant-making fund. So that is an option, you know, if there was interest in one or the other, we could certainly discuss that. But you'll notice on the last page of the request, it says, "Our request, we intentionally left it blank" because I just didn't know what an appropriate amount to ask for would be. If gifts of ten thousand dollars and greater allow you to name a fund, so if you were interested in a Preston County fund, I would encourage you to think of ten thousand dollars or greater, because then you could name it for Preston County. We of course accept like any dollar amount, but then it doesn't have the naming opportunity to, it doesn't name for specific funds. Where are you at in your one-million-dollar? We have raised three hundred and forty thousand dollars so far.
How's it, there are five counties that are involved with this, how are the others handling so far?
So you're just the third commission that we've presented to so far, and we actually haven't had anybody, everybody's shown a lot of interest, but nobody has said this is the exact amount we're going to get. It's a lot of, right now, presenting the information and then following up.
True.
We just wanted to make sure every county was aware of the opportunity and the funds that were available to be matched. Is this similar to the Tucker Foundation?
Yes.
There are actually over twenty community foundations in the state of West Virginia, and Preston County does have some overlap between the Tucker Community Foundation and Your Community Foundation.
Yeah, I went to your, before Cody hit, a couple of years ago, to the presentation you guys had around Morgantown, to the different organizations and checks and everything, which was real nice, because like, yeah, they were, I think at that time, I don't remember, it's been a while ago, you had the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, and those covered all the counties and things like that. They were part of the ones that got awarded, we could move from Preston, there was a couple other, there's a couple others that covered the area, which was neat.
Yeah, thank you for coming to that.
Thank you for the invitation.
Well, I certainly appreciate the information, and it's something, I believe it'd be a great opportunity to take our dollars and spread it out even further than, you know, just by giving to one organization. So we will definitely look at considering this.
Thank you, and it is a long-term investment, too, that, you know, we, to give you an idea on a ten-thousand-dollar endowment fund, typically that would provide about five hundred dollars every year for a nonprofit. So obviously, the larger the fund, the more dollars it distributes, but other people can give to your fund, too. So if you were to establish a fund for Preston County, it doesn't have to just be the commission that gives to it, others can contribute.
What would happen in the event of, because I heard you say that you demonetize five-oh-one C threes, and they tend to, you know, volunteerism is hard to help by these days, and so when they, is allowed or no longer compliant, how do you redirect those funds?
Well, so we ask for a grant application every single year, so we would be checking the compliance of the organization every year. And we've done like visits before, too, and really asked them some questions to make sure that it is a sustainable organization. But you're right, not all of them.
Why just have another circumstances, the commission has granted money to an organization or whatever it might be, and then they go away, and they're like, well, we just.
In this case, you wouldn't have to worry about, this would be like, this is like, with Tucker County, because I actually helped with some of the, a couple of years ago, helped with some of the approval of certain brand, the grant applications to grade them, and they literally, it goes to then, to the foundation, and then they will, before they put money to an organization, they make sure they're in compliance, and then they come back and say, okay, you can do this, you know, and they can put the application in at that time. Because, like I said, they're not in compliance, or they go away, because there's multiple organizations that have just faded away over time, or combined with other organizations because of overlap or whatever, they change names. Well, even West Virginia Care and Hospice, it used to be Hospice, now it's West Virginia Care and, it's still, you know, it, things change, so. But that's the best thing, because you go, they're gonna, no matter what, they're going to check, make sure that fund is gonna be, whether that money goes to is gonna be in compliance, too.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, brings us to our next appointment with Kristi Ash, Chamber of Commerce, with a proclamation for National Small Business Week.
Yes. Good morning, everyone, thank you for having me. On behalf of the Preston County Chamber of Commerce, I'm here to present, as you said, a proclamation that recognizes May first through the seventh as National Small Business Week, and it also recognizes the importance our small businesses play in both our community and, of course, our economy. Also, with this proclamation, we would like to encourage all of the citizens of Preston County to support our small businesses that help Preston County thrive. And so therefore, I'm asking for your signatures on the proclamation today in support of this recognition. Do I have a proclamation here? Oh, you have it.
I do have one, but yours is the pretty one. So let's go ahead and entertain a motion to accept and sign the proclamation.
At this time, I make a motion that we proclaim May as National, I'm sorry, May first, or National Small Business Week.
Sure.
Been properly moved and seconded to proclaim May first through May seventh as National Small Business Week in the county of Preston. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm gonna hand this off to you, would you mind to read that, please? New way.
Okay, in a matter of proclamation recognizing May one through May seventh as National Small Business Week in the county of Preston, whereas Preston County recognizes the values and dedication and entrepreneurial spirit of small business that keeps our local, regional, state, and national economy growing stronger, and serves May one through May seventh as National Small Business Week. Whereas the county works collaboratively with the Small Business Administration, Small Business Development Centers, Chamber of Commerce, cities, towns, and other organizations to forward the mission of helping our businesses grow and create new jobs within Preston County. Whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created, local communities preserve their unique culture. Whereas because this county's thirty-two million small businesses create nearly one-and-a-half million jobs annually and account for sixty-four percent of new jobs created in the United States, we must remain vigilant in our support of entrepreneurs to create jobs and spur economic growth for all levels of our economy. Whereas the President of the United States proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. So now, therefore, we have proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Preston County Commission on behalf of the citizens of Preston County at a regular meeting held April twenty-sixth, twenty-two, and hereby does with that vote proclaim May one through seven as National Small Business Week in Preston County and urge all citizens to support the small businesses who help the Preston County community thrive.
So appropriate. Thank you, Kristi, I appreciate the work that the chamber has been doing to engage in the county. It's very important and near and dear to my heart that, you know, it should be to all of our hearts up here on the county commission because supporting those small businesses in the county is what feeds our budget to help feed our elected officials in the county, so it's very important to do what we can here. So certainly appreciate your efforts. All right, moving along to our next appointment, just a few minutes later, I apologize, Linda, is she in here? She was. Oh, there she is, she's over there with you, you are not the Dominion Post.
Hey, Will, come on up.
Linda Hovins, our county clerk, with a budget revision and discussed poll worker increase and compensation.
Okay, well, I want to mention, before you sign that and run away with it, we need to get a copy of that for the minutes.
I know, that's why I said it right.
The proclamation, okay.
Because I knew, that's why I said, always said it right.
All right. Do we have a duplicate that you could sign?
You have this, yes.
Yeah, just if you'll sign the duplicate and give that to.
Did that, then Kristi can run.
I did not really prepare the budget revision, but I just wanted to step with you on what I'm proposing to give the poll workers an increase, you know. They get paid a hundred and fifty dollars for the day, which averages about ten dollars an hour. And I was gonna recommend an additional twenty-five dollars for a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. And, you know, they get paid twenty-five dollars to attend training. Training lasts an hour and a half to two hours, some travel a mile, some travel twenty-five miles to get to training in the back. And the supply and return commissioner, I mean, they get paid twenty-five and ten, and I could see a ten-dollar increase there. So what I'm looking at is about fifty-six-hundred-dollar increase. Now, I could, in my budget, help with that, but I don't have, the election budget's pretty tight. And right now, with the four municipalities that are on the election seat or on primary ballot, I will get, will get a reimbursement from those municipalities, but not to labor. And of course, that'll just go into the general fund, it's not like it's going to come back into the election budget.
You have an idea of how much that will be?
You know, programming, everything has risen, and nobody could, you know, nobody's really been able to give me an idea, but I'm gonna guess fifteen hundred to maybe two hundred or two thousand per municipality. So that could be, um, six thousand dollars.
That would have covered eventually, then, you know.
Yeah, it would, but I don't know, I mean.
I talked to several other commissioners at some of our meetings about this, and they have all, not all, maybe, but at least the ones that I can remember having a discussion with, have increased and are above what we are paying. And it's simply because they need to keep people doing it, you know, and that's.
And they're a very vital part of our election, very vital, very.
You know, I don't know what we need to look at to move forward with it and what the other commissioners think, but it sure is probably a good idea.
Well, I do know when I was making calls to get the appointments for the people to work the full, it was a bit of a struggle. You know, not everybody wanted to do it anymore with all of the changes with COVID and the things that happened during that time. And a lot, not a lot, if that's not correct. I have had a couple different people reach out with the change and how our process is with the computers, it's been a lot different with the work. So I do feel it's time for us to do an increase, but if you'll just give us a little bit of time to see where we want to pull the funds round to do that, what can you contribute, Linda?
Well, I'm looking at that couple of thousand at the most.
Okay.
You say two at most?
Yes.
And what's your increase?
Fifty-six-hundred. Fifty-six, fifty-six, thirty-five.
No.
And that's something that you can contribute annually to maintain that increase, I believe, yes. But again, I'm just, well, I will share with you, I don't have the invoices for the programming, and that stuff doesn't come after the election, so that's just all in the air, yeah.
Yeah, because you gotta know, you gotta be able to tell them in the counties how much they need to reimburse.
Right, so I have to wait till I get those invoices before I can.
That's why I asked, I didn't know if they had already given you that.
I just counted by past history.
Oh, okay.
How long has it been since we've done an increase for poll workers?
Haven't done a while, I've been on the mission.
Yeah, we have. Since you were here?
They were only getting one-twenty-five, and we went to one-fifty.
Yeah.
Must have been right when I started, then.
And I'm just telling you how many years it's been.
Okay, I was just curious.
It's been a few years.
Have election or two years, so yes, I know during this administration, we've had.
I think the people that do it don't do it a hundred percent of the money, they do it to us.
Yeah, we want to be able to cover.
They can't lose money on it, they'll take their day off or their other job.
But it sounds like with more and more towns may join in, so you may even recoup this and maybe a little bit better, she's predicting two, and how many municipalities do you currently have?
We have four on this primary.
So four times two is exceeding what she's.
Exactly, the seven towns are four-year terms.
Yeah, I got you.
I think, I, I think that every town ought to do it, because it saves some money.
I think, the other one, weren't they going to force them to anyway?
I don't know if that's, no, the last time.
I don't know if that's passed or not.
No, the special election is it, it does not, they have ordinances.
I don't think that's the right process, anyway, whether, you know.
I think the community wants to maintain their own process, actually.
Maybe, maybe, but it, and the other thing is, I believe that there's some confusion in how they transfer from being their own election to extending the terms of some of the people or shortening them. I'm not sure, but I understand sometimes.
Well, every, every.
Well, they have to, they have to pass the ordinance, I mean, they have to make an ordinance, and then they have to decide whether or not they're going to extend the season, because sometimes it turns into three-year, you know, the two-year term turns into a three-year term.
For a minute, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, they've done it, most of them have done it, and now if they have a question, if one of the other towns has a question, they've got enough other, the other towns have enough experience to be able to tell, you know.
So with the commission's approval, plenty of our worrying on, we'll put it on the approval for next week.
Yes, ma'am, as soon as she gives us information, she and I work together on that.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our Sheriff's Department Homeland Security Grant Police Ballistics. Good morning, Mel.
What?
Sheriff.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Okay.
See if I can get that, it's for a fourteen-thousand-dollar roughly grant for some equipment. Specifically ballistic vests.
It's vests?
Or shields. That's kind of sort of.
Okay.
It's just the upper level protection, protection.
And that's like a reimbursement grant, is that like?
It's homeland security.
This is homeland security, so they submit the invoice and you just.
I'm working, and there's no cop day or anything.
No match.
Match.
No match.
No match.
I just want to commend the sheriff's office, they have been aggressively going after Homeland Security Grants as well as the Office of Emergency Management, and I think that this department and that department are really benefiting from, they've got a good writer over there, so just kudos to the sheriff for his efforts.
When I've gotten stuff from Region Six with coffee and stuff like that, I've been pouring it from Melissa, hopefully that you guys could benefit from that, so, because anytime I get that from them, I'm bored and I know, I've heard, we've actually got about five of them.
Done a great job.
There's a motion, but thank you.
I think just authorize to sign the grant award.
So move, second.
Been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the documents for the Homeland Security Grant Program Award. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a moment, is it a reward or an application?
It's a reward.
You've already got some money, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes they're instant, sometimes they're. Have you ordered yet?
I don't know.
Yeah, no kidding, it might be a good idea.
Thank you, ma'am.
The check is in the mail's number.
You need that notice to proceed, right, Sheriff?
Thank you.
All right, brings us to an update from our new facilities manager, Joe LaRue, with the report and other provisions.
Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, everybody. If I may present to the commissioners the budget revision and the proposal for the purchase of tools for repairing and monitoring gauge back. Revision is on top. So just a quick update to the commission, what we're working on last week, I was updated with the commission on Friday by email. And so, of course, we did the housekeeping stuff, you know, getting the, the everything done, HR stuff, door batches, et cetera. Me and Mark has been very kind, he took me to the annexed courthouse and the meeting room. We had a great meeting down, just a quick meeting down at the nine-one-one center with Director Dwayne and Assistant Director Justin, and Pete Justin took the time to show me all the systems in the building, and it's really nice. As I updated you at the animal shelter, there was a, there's several jobs that need to be done that I think that we could do in-house. I will create a proposal to give to you here, you know, just a quick list, you know, the now it's amazing that the sewer is hooked up to the town sewer, and the previous two tanks are needing, you know, caved in and filled up with dirt. And then over on the entrance side of the animal shelter, there's a situation where the damp spot front across the driveway and the freezing column breathes lies, the tanks out front also flow up with water and create that. So it's something we could probably, if you all decide, we could fix really quickly. And of course, if the decision is made to rent an excavator, you know, we'd have to have meetings, of course, ahead of time to meet with Dwayne and Justin about fixing the, you know, ongoing sewer trouble outside the back driveway. You know, and it's not nothing, you know, that can't be dealt with maintenance-wise, you know, they've come up with a plan to how often to clean it, prevent it, it'd be just nice to take care of it, be done, nobody has to, you know, worry about it.
Was it needed drain field or?
No, sir, it seems as though during the construction, the way they installed the sewer drains is, it causes a lot of conflict. It's sort of like, it's sort of like they went above and beyond their call of duty to make it complicated when it's very simple. But as we know, the problem is now that you have to cut the blacktop, and I certainly understand that everybody, you know, they don't really like to do that, and we can get through that. But in the meantime, when we was looking, I was asked while we had an excavator by Administrator Mace that there was a situation that needed down in the crew house. So on a quick inspection last Friday of the crew house, and only outside, we had not, you know, asked them for permission to go in, we, I found a hose bill was running all the time. So as a courtesy from the commission and. So as a courtesy from the commission and from, you know, the only maintenance staff, uh, we contacted them and offered to fix the hose bib so it didn't run all the time. So, uh, and of course, they, you know, happily accept it. So yesterday, me and Mark got our way down and we, we, our intent was to go inside the structure, find a way to access it and just replace the hose bib. But we could not access that part of the structure. Administrator Mace tells me that was the add-on. And that's sort of a concern. And I, I don't mean to continue going, just quickly. After a building inspection and meeting with the, with the members of the society, we went down in the basement and they paid a sizable amount of money for a dehumidifier for the space down there to help the whole building. But basically the dehumidifier, through a fault of the condensate pump, was just letting the water back out in the space. So once again, as a courtesy to them, we can replace the pump for about some kind of cost, just a common, condensate pump. And so if you all agree, then we'll do that. So, uh, you know, so that was, uh, it was a very busy first week and I appreciate you all's help in all these matters. And I appreciate Administrator, Administrator Mace's help. She has taught me with a lot of budget stuff. All sorts of situations. She's a very busy lady, but she continues to find time that, that she can help me and advise me and show me and I certainly appreciate it. So with that, you know, uh, also on the tools, if you all need to go over what they do and why they do it, we can or?
No, I'm pretty straightforward. I mean, you email them. I'm, well, it's on the drive. Yeah, I'm not sure who puts it on there, but it's on there. Basically, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep. So basically, you know, just so we can monitor most of all the systems and then a lot of the stuff, if we have to recover the refrigerant, we want to be, you know, mindful of all the the evolutions. So that's basically what it all is. And there's also some repair plate tools in there.
I think that, you know, tools are valuable asset if somebody knows how to use them and we do. So I, I think that you should.
Do you have any other budget provisions? Okay, so we'll just pull off the approval.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we need to entertain a motion for minutes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 5th.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for April 5th, 2022. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss the reading of proceedings in vacation and enter them into record for April 14th through April 20th, 2022.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. We have no estate settlements. Uh, brings us to our old business with our CARES funding. Do we have anything to discuss concerning that today?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, in your bill box, you have the allocation for Mount, uh, I'm sorry, for Newburgh and also for Roseburg, which leaves us two, which is Mount Grove and Fellasville. We received Mount Grove's information this morning. Uh, so you'll have that in the bill box for next time. Uh, they actually acquired some land. And, uh, so we'll be giving them assistance with that purchase for their fire department. And, uh, the next one's Fellasville. I am trying to reach out and get some numbers and then everyone will have their money.
All right, perfect. Anything else for CARES funding?
Uh, I'm, I'm waiting. Justin's supposed to be giving me the last.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything either.
Yeah, he's supposed to be giving me the last information for the AEDs, so he's got that taken care of and get open now.
All right. Good.
Yeah, I, you know, we, next week I'd like to talk about the EMS funding for CARES. It's on our agenda.
So as long as we have adequate information, I just want to make sure we have enough time to look, digest it.
Don't they have another meeting this week?
Yeah, the fifth.
Okay, okay.
It's the fifth, so I don't know that.
So maybe you need the next one, Dave. Maybe you need the next meeting after this meeting, because I know they were working on some stuff about wages and some other things.
Oh, I, I was, I was confused. I thought that was a long-term thing of how much we needed to.
No, I think that we're going to get some information, but we, I can check on that for you and see if there's anything new coming your way. If there's nothing new coming your way, you want to discuss this, fine with me. But I got the impression that at this meeting, Tim, the accountant, Tim, was working on some additional information for the.
Well, I, hey, I'm confused too, Dave, because I'm, I'm like you. I thought that information was for the long-term plan. What they gave us the other day, that two hundred and fifty-three.
Oh, you mean your court is the instant.
Is for the instant relief. And then that is for whatever we decide to do.
Well, then I misunderstood.
Yeah, so I mean, so in that, if that being the case, we can probably.
Okay, I'll put it on for you.
Because that's two different animals.
Just, you know, I know that we have to move forward with a long-term thing, you know, some numbers that.
Yeah, but I mean, Dr. Conley's nice enough during that presentation to get, break it down and give us good numbers so that we have the data now for that. You know, if we want to do an immediate.
Short-term.
Short-term fix.
That's, that's all.
If, if there's any questions, we, just send me an email and if you still have questions on the information that Dr. Conley provided you for you to discuss on my third, just send me an email. Make sure to disseminate that to the people that need to be.
Absolutely. It doesn't hurt for it to be on every week right now that we're up.
Well, the CARES funding is always on, so anything you want to discuss under CARES funding doesn't have to be specific to an item.
Right. I think that, I think that maybe, you know, having the EMS in there so that we can, you know, look at, we, we working on the, if, if it's decided to do some sort of a EMS fee, you know, we can be putting those things together and making some small movements.
Uh, I do, I do think that, yeah, the one thing that we do need to put on in a decision made relatively soon is, uh, Mason Town, Mr. Lazir, who's been here twice, asking you for funding on a lawsuit.
He hasn't met with Dr. Conley yet, right?
He's coming to, uh, Compton and, and Mason Town representatives are coming on Thursday.
Mason. Just to give you that information, you know, that's still lingering out there. So that is one that, uh, if, if you're considering this, uh, an infusion of money for your EMS, uh, just make that a consideration as well, because it's been out there for a while.
Well, and I, you know, I was under the understanding that they had not ordered the cement, the cement.
No, they, the way I understood his presentation that day and the documents that he gave us is that they were moving forward with ordering it. They're doing it. They would appreciate a contribution, a contribution on that.
Yeah, they were buying it.
So, you know, I'm sure they would like to add that.
They're providing the service with or without.
They're not holding up on it.
If you consider CARES funding, that's just part of the package, right? That's what I'm saying, yeah.
All right.
Okay, moving on to our administrator's report. Kathy.
Okay, um, we need to reschedule the May 10th meeting, which is election day, to May 11th. That's really in your statutory meeting that if, if meeting is, uh, holiday on Tuesday, we'll move to Wednesday. Just wanted to make a note, uh, on your calendars that we'll be meeting on May 11th. Uh, next item is an update on the county coordinating position. Uh, we do have a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow to do some interviewing. Uh, so just wanted to, uh, announce that. The next item that I have for you is a letter of support for Arthurdale. This is a letter of support to the Appalachian Regional Commission. It's very similar actually on the trades, um, uh, the educational space for workforce development on the Preservation Trades Program. They're asking for funding, there is not an amount, uh, for feasibility, it's really planning, feasibility, market announces, those kind of things. So I'd ask that the commissioner sign the letter of support for Arthurdale.
Yeah, I saw the email from them.
Yeah, that was, uh, they're really aggressive and going after their, their own funding, uh, on which we've, uh, signed the, uh, letter of support and seconded that.
Been properly moved and seconded to authorize the commission to sign this letter of support uh, to the Appalachian Regional Commission on Arthur, uh, for Arthurdale Heritage, the work they're doing to get funding for their expansion of it. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, the next item I have is an update on ARPA funding. On April 30th is our deadline to, uh, file our projects and expenditure report for, uh, actually any expenditure since you received the money, which was last June. Uh, it asks for your obligations. It asks for any community, uh, community for the obligations and also asks for community of expenditures and those in the period that we're discussing. If I've, if I've been to one webinar, I have another one today, I've, I've been to 50 webinars and basically the federal government has now given a standard allocation for any county that has $10 million or less in allocations. And, uh, the federal government has decided that $10 million is a standard allocation for revenue replacement. Uh, they're not asking for any support documents. They are, um, saying that there is no benefit for a county not to take the standard deduction or allowance, uh, if you have less than $10 million. So far, our obligations are to the lead grant program, which is 1.674 million for connectivity, access on broadband. Uh, you have lots of other proposals that sort of fit in the final rule, but no final decisions. So we need to decide today, because, uh, the, the window is getting shorter, on, uh, to go with the standard allowance. Um, as I've told you and I've shared the YouTube videos with you all, the federal government has said there is no benefit not to take the standard allowance. So with that being said, all of your money would go under revenue replacement. There are no documents that you must apply. The federal government assumes that, um, everyone has had at least $10 million of loss. They need to replace that much money. So, um, it shortens your reporting. It doesn't restrict you from having projects such as the broadband, such as, uh, maintenance on your buildings, such as, uh, construction, such as parks and rent. It, it doesn't limit you. Uh, the decision is, do we want to make one project with smaller projects under it? And I'm, I'm still uncertain about that part. However, I'm not uncertain that based on the recommendation of the federal government that your 6.4 plus million should all be revenue replacement. I see no benefit to you to hold out for the other categories. So I need a motion, uh, for me to report your six point, and I don't have an exact number and I apologize, it's 6.4 million in revenue replacement as recommended by pressure.
I, at this time, would like to make that motion, so we don't have to worry about this from quarterback to quarterback.
Second.
It's, um, been properly moved and seconded to, um, authorize Administrator Mace to, uh, report the 6.4 million, not exactly.
Your entire award.
Our entire.
Entire award.
Yeah, just say it, because it is.
Revenue replacement will be the category.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, today I hope to have my final answer. I've reached out to, I've reached out by phone and I was number 89. So I reached out by email and I think I'm number 5,000, but, uh, hopefully I'll get some kind of response on. I believe you're safe. If you look at it logically, you are reporting your entire award
Right.
as revenue replacement. So you could create one project and then internally track your smaller projects. And I will tell you that I have prepared a contractual agreement, a grant award agreement, uh, a quarterly report form. And I, I have all that. I also asked for a statement of insurance from, uh, our only particular partner right now is the Prosecutor Economic Development Authority. A statement of insurance that every vendor is licensed to do business in the state of West Virginia. I have prepared that. Uh, I'm giving it to the prosecutor today. I have talked with the auditor's office. Verbally, we've talked and it sounds like the right path, because we're going to have internal controls. Separate apart from the federal government, you'll have internal controls. You can use all this particular, uh, template for any project that you do. So I'm waiting for the legal vetting on the agreement. Uh, I fashioned the agreement after a couple that the state of West Virginia used. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. It's just localized more, because this is a cost share. You'll have to tweak those depending on if it is just an allocation or if it's a cost share or, or whatever, uh, your thing is. Uh, however, I think we're in good shape there. I did talk with them and they were very pleased that we're going to do internal controls. The federal government is not requiring that, but if, in my humble opinion, uh, if there would ever be a federal audit, you're gonna have each one of these in a nice little package.
I heard it, yes.
They pull that out and they're gonna say, oh, wow, you know, this is what we have to look at.
My, my big worry, if, if we were to stay under the, the thumb of the federal government when everybody has received all this money, much more than we did in most cases, um, and, and they're going to have to approve each expenditure? I can't see the federal government keeping up with that.
They certainly have given you some discretion to say, you're, you're not going to spend more than you've been allocated, right? Okay, and we all know it's under one category, which is revenue replacement, because that's what they're suggesting that we do. So you can, you can do that with one project and say, our intent is to use this money on broadband. Our intent, we are considering, you have SNAP, you have several things to consider. However, no firm decision has been made on those. Our obligation is to lead, uh, I've been on a webinar with that. I did ask for some modifications. These, your broadband grant. Ask for some modifications in their reporting system to give you a better idea of what your matching money is going to be used for. Uh, or cost share is probably the proper term on that. So I, I, I think this is groundbreaking and I do think that the federal government realized the multitude of questions. I can tell you in the, and when it was first released, um, I think there were 7,000 emails in the, in, in the first hour. So, uh, you, regardless of the amount of money that you receive, if you receive two, $20 million, you can still take the standard allowance for that first 10 and then put it in your categories for your other. The reporting on the categories is significant. It's sub-grants, sub- recipients. And even though we're creating these projects and partnering with other people, that is not required when you have less than $10 million.
It'll take time, take money, take.
It's gonna give you, it's gonna give us more flexibility.
I think it gives you much more flexibility and so I'm pleased that the, uh, commission wants to go in that direction. And I, my plan is unless, uh, I get something that I'm again confused about, we will file today and so we make it for you.
Today, again, is it today?
Yeah, yes, or two o'clock. Yeah, this is with NACO and I always like to, uh, I always do treasury and I like to do NACO as well, because NACO is the National Organization for County Commissions. And so their take on it is a little bit different.
And they bring it down to that, treasury just goes, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, exactly.
NACO goes, okay, for example, and they.
And, and, and I will tell you, on the fifth webinar for the same information, by the end, they were giving us what we needed. They were giving us, uh, here's an idea, here's a template, here's everything. So it is our job to make sure that every project that we're looking at meets that final goal. I mean, we're not still, we just can't just do anything.
Right.
We have, we have to follow the, the final goal. But as far as your reporting, um, I think this is a, a great way of, of approaching it and our internal controls. I believe our internal controls will be a model. Um, in fact, they've asked me to, to submit some stuff. So I think that, uh, everybody's looking for a way to, to handle this stuff. I'm sorry?
Efficiently.
Yeah. So the next, the, the next thing on this is, uh, they call it a tranche. I've never heard that word before. Have you heard that word before? Okay, a tranche is actually an allocation. That's another way. You receive your first allocation, which was 3.2 plus million, which is sitting in the bank, all interest for you, because we haven't really expended anything. Your next tranche will come one year after, it cannot come before one year, and then you've got your allocation in June. So I would say, um, post-June, uh, you could anticipate your second tranche. Now, you're, when you, when you do this report on the 30th, you're taking all your money, even though you have not received it in the bank. That's what the federal government is allocating you. So it's one report, then the next report is in a year. And that was my concern about dividing this up into all these projects, because
It's gonna make the report.
That portal is like, well, sorry, we're not working today. So this way, I'll explain in my explanation how we're doing internal controls. Before I do submit this, I will email you my responses in the two dialogues so that you know what I'm saying and committing us to. So with your permission, I'm gonna move forward with that approach and, uh,
We've already got.
I want this down. I, I, I'm sorry?
We've already got the motion, so we're.
Right. Okay. Any other questions on ARPA funding?
We've already got the motion.
I want this done. I'm sorry?
We've already got the motion, so we're.
Right. Okay. Any other questions on ARPA? One thing you have to keep in mind, you've got to spend all the money by 2026.
Right.
As you're approaching a project.
Well, actually, do you have to have it spent, or does it allocate?
No, spend. 24.
All right. Is there a little funkiness there a little bit?
In 24, you must have your allocations. Now, one of the things we'll, the tranche, the tranche, or whatever it's called, that money, the only person that can actually get that money for you right now is me, because I'm the one submitting everything. So we do need probably make some changes there. So hopefully, that we will get those. I have the email saying how I go about doing that, because you'll have to change the IDV. We have several things that we want to do. So that if this would come after I'm not here any longer, that whoever can give that submission. Okay, any questions on that?
Probably, but no.
Yeah, no. Okay, the next item I have is you have Mr. LaRue's budget revision. And of course, that's taking money from maintenance prepared buildings to grounds, I believe, and putting in that equipment, right, Joe? Okay. And that is for the equipment that he is purchasing. Budget revision I have for you today is, one, as we prepare for the veterans' plaza. Last week, you gave permission.
$13,000.
Yes, sir. Last week, you gave permission to move forward with the first phase of the veterans' pluses. So I'm asking to take $13,000 of county commission contributions and putting it into professional services. So.
Anything else? Okay.
No, we're good.
At this time, then, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget revisions that have been presented to us today.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to approve the two budget revisions that they have been presented. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, couple of housekeeping. We have received your self-insurance proposal from the RISB, which is our liability warranty. I'll forward you this document to you, just in case you would want to look at what's covered under your insurance. Basically, it's the same. I will tell you that we did get a little bit of a break, because it's member-owned. So we got a credit of, it looks like almost $4,000. So that will help bring your premiums down. So I'll share that with you. The other thing I received is, we had a conversation several weeks ago with higher ed about training for EMS. And you have given an allocation. And I got an opportunity for reimbursement for training costs. However, the application is due May 2nd. I have some questions on it. I'll do my best to try to turn this around. I thought we'd have a longer lead time on that. So I may not be able to get this one in. However, I'd like to try and get an extension if I could, based on all counties are faced with this ARPA deadline as well. Plus, it says that you can actually recoup some clear up to September. So I'm going to reach out to, I forget her name, Cynthia.
Cynthia, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to reach out to her and just see if I can beg, borrow, and steal, perhaps, an extension on this a little bit, because I just received it. So as far as the calendar bills, just a couple reminders. I do have a webinar this afternoon at 2:00. I'll be happy to forward you the link if you would like to attend. Next, tomorrow is a special meeting for interviews. I do have a meeting, a dinner meeting with CDB to go over some stuff on Thursday. Then, next week, don't forget about, you have the public hearing during your meeting on the minor boundary adjustment. I can verify that all the publications have been done properly and advertised. And then on Thursday, I have the National Day of Prayer. I believe that begins at 8:00 in the courthouse. Any questions for me?
All right, brings us down to Commissioner's comments and the following.
I was waiting, you could say, if you wanted to. Really, not a whole lot, you know. Really, just, really, really hasn't done a whole lot to talk about that we didn't talk about last week. And then next week, I mean, there's some different things we got going on, and all those different meetings, and things like that, so those things, and that's for. And that's really.
EMS next week, we'll just have a routine kind of gathering on that.
On the method?
Yeah, yeah. I guess it's a, it's a, it's a good time for us to make a good point of how badly we need to work on, not just the county, but the communities, work on the dilapidated buildings, the abandoned, the empty buildings that, that Saturday morning, the fire departments, Kingwood and Oakland joined Terrell Fire Department to extinguish a fire in a house that was abandoned and, as I understand it, owned now for some time by the state. And there had been homeless or drug purchases, probably, people using that house, as well as others that have been identified that need to be torn down.
What was that located at? I know it was up in near the neck of the woods.
Yeah, that was in Terrell, yeah. And the people saw, you know, people coming and going. So what made it even more complicated, it went pretty fast. And what made it more complicated was the fact that people said there's about six or seven different people that come and go there. And the Sheriff's Department is very aware of that. They take the people out of there. So they knew it was a problem. It's a problem on the manpower and everything for them to keep up with this. And it's all over the county.
I do have one question about that. I haven't received any information on that, that bill that passed, on that. But my question is, is I wonder if it might not be prudent if municipalities have identified abandoned property that's being used for homeless or drug users.
Whatever, illegal, certainly.
That if we can identify those by residence, and let me reach out to them and say, okay, what's the process here? Because we don't want to get off the list. And that may rise them up higher on the food chain kind of, because the money is not a bunch, so we want to make sure. So if you, if you're reaching out to, like, you reach out to the mayor there, and if we could get some kind of, if we could put something together, a package deal anyway. And I did talk with the Assistant Auditor yesterday, and it just, we were on ARPA. But I will reach out to him again and try to provide, hopefully, next week, more information on that program.
Yeah, and I'm tickled with that, that that community, it came to, we've known. Because the rest of the day was spent going through and moving everything from piece by piece, looking to make sure everybody had made it out. So the, I can't imagine the manpower, as well as the actual money spent on this one particular event, could have probably paid to tear down that house before it happened, the thousands of dollars that were used. So, and you know, as a first responder, I know that bad things can happen to the responders too, in situations.
If you ask them to get in touch with you.
Anyway, they have an enforcement officer now.
Yeah, saw that.
And they have somebody who is going to be able to take care of these things for legal matters when they're brought in. And so the community has been in touch with the auditor's office on that. So at least one community has been, Terrell Audit is going to change the way they look, I think. And this fire Saturday really.
That request that if any community would like to care out, and if they have an enforcement officer, and they have a change of ordinance or identified some things, if they would get that information to Jay, because Jay is the one that is actually the first line of defense on identifying dilapidated buildings and all that kind of stuff. So if you'd ask the town to make sure he has that information, I think that would be helpful in our identification of the problem areas.
So we're making progress. I just want to make sure that higher end of it, with the dilapidated buildings, new ordinance doesn't.
I think Jay's the key there.
Yeah, well, yeah, we need to talk to him.
And on that note, I do want to thank, there was a lot of cleanup efforts around the county this weekend.
Yeah.
I was with Jay on Saturday morning. And, I mean, there were places to get picked up all over the county. So I want to thank all the people who went out and volunteered their morning. It was a beautiful day, thankfully, and it worked out really well, so.
I did, I saw the bags that were, the police staff, to be picked up, actually.
Oh, yeah, there was a bunch of them around the county, which was really awesome.
If we could, one item we forgot, which is significant to you, that, and Joe, we have decided to encourage the wildlife, which lights your windows, to relocate, thanks to the efforts of Mr. LaRue. So I think that they've decided they need to find another home, because these homes are now not available. So I want to thank him.
Are you going to put, are you going to put some reflective things on there? I know they make those like infrared reflectors that you put on the windows.
Oh, no, no, we took care of them.
Basically, commissioners on those two windows. And this one is fine. Basically, for some reason, possibly when they redone the beautiful commission room, they actually left about an inch and three quarter gap above the window. And the top of the wood on the window was exposed. So me and Mark went up there and cooked the flashing and flashed the whole area off and sealed it properly. And as Administrator Mace says, the wildlife will have to find another place to nest. And it won't be, the breed won't be intruding upon your building, and this building will be much happier.
For multiple reasons, not just the wildlife.
They have all those pork rinds.
And they love it up there.
I had it made.
That goes in the burrow.
Yep. Just for the other possible houses.
All right. I have a couple things. On Friday, after our EMS meeting, no, we didn't have the EMS meeting on Friday.
That was Thursday.
Yes. What did we do Friday? Oh, we had a special session to shorten our commission, our county coordinator position. We went down to the election center and tested the voting machines, the election equipment. And that's just such a, I take a lot of pride in that process, you know? We get a lot of people saying, you know, is it done fairly? Or the votes tabulated correctly? And you know, we go through the process, Linda's office, Kim Dixon does an amazing job at what she does. And so it is just truly, I just take a lot of pride in that process. And thank you for your hard work and dedication to making sure that our elections are crystal clear and transparent.
Because tabulation is what's tested. So that kind of make up our own script. And then after the results are run, we can verify that what the commissioners voted on the machines and was counted is correct.
And it wasn't just the three commissioners that do that. There's representatives from Linda's office, the press was there, and also Joe Williams was there. And so there's.
Yeah, he's one of the ballot commissioners.
Yes, more eyes on the process than just ours or the clerk's office. So it's just a great process to make sure the transparency and everyone is, you know, all votes are tallied correctly inherently. So it's just a good process.
Linda, I think someone asked me, is the election center, I know like last time because of COVID, it wasn't open, but they wanted to know if the election center would be open that election night, you know?
Yeah, we will, we will have it more open. And, but we will kind of block off, just to kind of let our path.
Well, yes, so people get my views and stuff.
Yeah, there's no reason for that.
Well, and the beauty of our election center, and why we decided to choose that location, is because there's the window, the hallway that you're out of the weather. And I would think it would probably be a good thing, because I think it worked out fantastic last time. But we have that TV hooked up again on election night, because the results come in so that people don't have to, they can see what you're doing in there. They can see things coming in, and it's a beautiful process. It's a great layout, and so.
That was a good.
It is.
That is, we can be really proud of how that has turned out for the election center. And people getting there. I mean, it's parking, it's paved, it's accessible by wheelchair or whatever. They have the ramps. I mean, it's just, it's great.
Well, and getting through the last election there showed the need for a couple adjustments, you know, within the facility, which are minor compared to, you know, I just remember coming in here in, you know, 2018. Whoa, it's so nice down there. And even over in your office, you know, when they were running the special school levy and those things.
It is very nice.
It is so very nice.
So very nice.
And it is. Kudos to you, Linda, because I believe you're the one that came up with that space and presented it to us initially. And I recall like bucking it initially, but thank you for your persistency, because it's worked out, so.
Well, it is, it's very nice to have, very nice.
It is.
All right.
Boy, we've really worked that one over.
And thanks, thank you to you guys, you got it. Because you guys are paying the bills.
The next thing is another opportunity to learn all about our candidates across the board at a forum that's being held April 29th, I believe. Social Hour begins at 6:30. The forum starts promptly at 7:00.
That is correct.
And that's at the North Preston Area Watch Center, which, or the group is hosting that. And it's at the North Preston Senior Center out on 26th, heading towards, into Bruson. And so I want to encourage everybody, you know, you don't really know a lot about these candidates unless they, one, connect with you, or, two, go listen. And so don't take my word for it, because I'm not going to tell you who to vote for one way or the other. But there are a lot of things you can learn from that. And if you have questions, always reach out to those candidates. Hold them accountable to what they're, what they're talking about. And let's see what May 10th will bring us. I'm excited. Looks like a lot of changes with the board of ed. And there's a lot of races that are exciting ones going to affect our makeup here on the county commission. So please make it a point to come out and get educated on what's going on. The next thing I'd like to do is just publicly congratulate the Buckley Festival Court royalty that was selected to represent the county. It's a, it's a pretty big deal and a role that, you know, those, those young adults moving up through go out and speak to the kids in the county. And just so many other things come of that. And those students from Preston High School certainly work very hard to be a part of that. It's a wonderful process. So congratulations to them. And congratulations for a successful pageant. You know, every little thing that we get back in person is big, because the last two years, that process didn't take place in person. And it was much missed in the community. One of those things that helped to bring our community together. One thing that I would just like to address as a concerned citizen myself, and just bring a little bit of light to, is the amount of the need and the signs on businesses that say hiring all shifts, needing people to get engaged in the workforce again across the county. You know, it's disheartening to me when I, for me, when I go to need a service and they say that they're open until 7:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, and they're just shutting down because there's no one to work the shifts. That's the problem. It's not that they don't want to remain open, there's just no employees to work those shifts. So, I mean, COVID is still, you know, the pandemic has not just gone away. We've learned, we grew, we've received funding that, because of it, that is helping, helping many areas of the county. You know, it's important that now we get up and go back to work. So I want to encourage anybody that knows anybody that needs a job or is looking for something, now's the time to do that. There is no reason to be scared and just go into hiding. We need to get back out there and get to work. Because if not, these small businesses around this county and the services that we all expect are going to shut their doors. And then we're going to be back to where we used to be with absolutely nothing. And so we need to, it's up to us to support and get to work and teach these young people coming up in the ranks a little, that a little bit of hard work will go a long way. So.
One item on that that I forgot to mention was, last week, there was the meeting on behavioral medicine and mental health, and it was great. We had providers, we had people who refer, people, Susan Hooton, who was instrumental in bringing this to the forefront, was there. Great dialogue. One of their concerns was the inability to recruit case managers and mental health professionals. They're struggling with the same lack of workforce. But I will say that soon, we will be getting, we will be getting a summary of that meeting that's going to be shared with all of us that attended the meeting. And future meetings will be held based on what we're finding out. A bigger community meeting is going to develop from that. But it was great. But it was great to hear what the provide, what actually is being provided. I'm going to be honest with you, I was, I was surprised because, you know, you hear all kinds of rumors that nothing's going on, and that's not necessarily the case. I think that things were brought to providers' attention, and some things have already been corrected because of that meeting. So kudos to the health department and everybody that attended. I thought it was a great meeting, and we're looking forward to a bigger, more community, global meeting in the near future.
Remember with the needle exchange and everything?
Yes, yes, sir, and I, and I talked with her. So I, I will, I will talk to you.
Things that put me.
The harm damage, yes.
So that's good. It's moving forward.
All right, well, I think that's all that I have for today. There's always a meeting. I always seem to get dragged into a meeting for something through the weeks that's not always pre-scheduled. But again, important stuff that we must do as commissioners. So with that, if no one else has anything else, then this meeting is adjourned.